Today's work session, we have one presentation that's before the Board of Commissioners, and that is to receive a presentation by our Finance Director, Bill Volkman, regarding the 2026 amended budget request summary. With that, Bill, I will turn things over to you.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. It is that season where we're kicking off budget. The departments have been working hard, and they got all their requests into us at the end of December, and we've codified those, kind of put them together in a summary presentation for y'all. And what we're going to be doing, just like we did in the previous years, is we'll be preparing each of you a binder that we'll be handing out prior to our meetings where we sit down and discuss these in detail. But today, we wanted to just kind of walk through some high-level overview and walk through the schedule of what we should expect for this year. This is the second year of our biannual budget. So obviously, 2025 was the first year where we do the full-blown, go out and do the requests, go through the requests in detail, provide those detailed conversations with the Board, as well as the public in those presentations. So the Chairwoman's letter that kicked off that process is the same letter that would apply to the second year of the biannual process. And departments were encouraged to identify savings, areas that can be realigned to meet their funding needs. And you'll see that through a lot of them. Departments have moved from one object code where they've had savings to another object code where they've had needs. Budget requests should be critical and aligned with the county's strategic outcome areas. And we've also helped do that, and I'll show you a slide of kind of what we did in 2025 and kind of how those compare. And then also, a copy of the budget letter can be found on the budget page. Okay, so just to set some expectations with this budget, just maintaining existing service levels will automatically require a budget increase. So I say that because of some of the factors that would be listed on this page here. So we've had a reduction in vacancies. So that is one of the keys that we've seen this last year. Vacancies have been a struggle. We've seen a lot of departments be able to close some of those gaps. Public safety was one of our largest areas. They filled 44 positions within public safety. So we did see that as we transitioned. And then DOT had a pretty good increase this year. They closed 15 of those vacant positions as well. So overall, we had a significant reduction in vacancies, and that is good, but it also has an impact. So county-wide, from the time we took the snapshot last year for the 2025 budget to the time we took a preliminary snapshot for 2026, the county has filled 106 vacant positions. So we've been able to be very attractive to possible applicants coming into the county and been able to maintain that filling of those positions, as well as help with retention. So that is one of the big areas that you'll notice, is that just simply taking that personnel snapshot, they will change, because vacant positions are funded at 50%. And once we have a full-time position in there, they're funded at salaries and benefits and so on. So that is one of the areas that you'll see as a driver. And then also, the way we do merit. We give merit in March, as well as step in grade in March. So the full-year impact of that award is effective in the next year's budget. So the merit that was just received in the step in grade for this March for all of our employees who had a proficient progress report will have an impact in the overall increase in '26. And then, I would love to tell you, there's a year where we didn't see a healthcare increase, but that is simply not the case. Those healthcare increases are routine and have a pretty good impact on us each and every year. And then, one of the other items that we've noticed over the last several years, the way contracts are driven, is they typically have annual step-ups. So we have to account for those in each budget cycle. So as you approve a contract for five years, it could have, you know, a 1% or 2% increase each year as we move forward. So we have to account for those. And then, lastly, on this one, well, actually, sorry, second to last on this one is going to be utilities. So we're not immune to that, just like any other person in the county. As utility costs increase, we have an increased cost. So when we look at, you know, things like water costs, or electrical, or anything like that, fuel for our vehicles, anything that we'd associate with that is going to come into play. So we do have to account for those. And then, we have general costs that are simply due to inflation. So anything that we build today is going to cost more than it would a couple of years ago. So we try to maintain, stay up to date with those increased costs. So again, no additional service levels. So we should be expecting a budgetary increase just as we go through those. The only way you would not see a budgetary increase is if you were looking at a reduction in some sort of service or category. Okay?
Bill, we have a question.
Yes, absolutely.
Go ahead, Commissioner. Anybody has any questions, just let me know. Yes, go ahead. Commissioner Burrell.
When you say that the number of vacancies that have been filled, I know that they're funded at 50%, so we have to do the full benefits, everything, when they come onboard. So do you have a breakdown of departments? When you say public safety, the sheriff, police, fire, everybody?
Yes, we, actually, that is one of the handouts that will be part of your binder packet. So we'll give you the change-by-department breakdown. So you can see, for example, we show public safety, but then we like to break out public safety between animal services, police, and so on. Sheriff definitely has his own mind. So when we say public safety in this category, it's the General Fund Public Safety Department, which would include police, animal services, and so on. They added 44. But then, we get into specifically, police, and actually have that right here. They filled, police alone filled 38. But yes, that will be 38. So that is a net 38. So if they had people leave, they added 38 positions during this year.
Okay, and what about sheriff?
Sheriff, I have that right here for you. They actually are down six. So they actually increased their, they filled six positions during fiscal year 2025. And then, one of the things that will help you kind of put that in perspective is we'll also give you the current vacancies for each department. So you can kind of see how that looks as well. So even though, you know, we'll say, police did a good job, and they filled 38 positions in total, you'll still get to see where their current vacancies sit today. So they still have a significant number of vacancies.
Yeah.
Okay?
And then you have it broken down for water, DOT, everybody?
Absolutely. Yes, we'll have both of those, both the filled positions and current vacancies, broken down by department for each of you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I knew you had it, I just wanted to know what it was.
Yeah, I'm bouncing between screens, but yes, that is all part of your binder, because that is important when we go into position requests. You're going to want to know, you know, how are they doing, filling positions and where are they currently sitting at vacancies? Okay? Any other questions before I go to the next slide?
Commissioner Gamble?
So you said there was 181 positions that was funded.
There was 100 and, sorry, bear with me, scroll down, 106 filled.
Right, but go back to your previous screen where you said there was 100, the 181 new positions.
Yes.
First bullet point. So of those 181 new positions, of the 106, how many of that was the new positions?
We could have to get that breakdown for you, because I know that was one of the emphasis, is that you're looking at departments. When they got a new position, they're asked to fill the existing positions before they fill the current, the new positions. But it's going to come down to, like, for example, if we had an accountant-one vacancy and you gave us an accountant-two, those are going to be different requirements in different positions. So we can try to break that down for you all, is how that would look. I think the biggest gauge is going to be looking at how many positions were filled and where the current vacancies sit. And then, when, if you would like to see that, where those vacancies lie. So for example, let's say, police has, and I don't know the exact number of vacancies, but let's say they had 70 vacancies. That doesn't mean they're all officer positions. They could be a variety of different positions. So we also could provide that to you if that would be helpful.
That would be helpful, but again, I'm kind of curious as if we, if we filled 106, but we budgeted 181 new. How many of those 181 new got filled?
Sure, yes, we can walk through that. We can definitely provide that to you as part of the handout, walk through that conversation. So, because I think when we're looking back at last year, and you're looking at the first bullet point, and I'm trying to blow this up, because I'm having a hard time seeing it, but yes, I see the 181 new positions that you, yeah. So that would have been in the previous year. So we're looking, that would have been '23, '24 budget period. And '25, we did not fill, add very many new positions. But we can still go back to 2023, 2024, and kind of identify those and tell you which ones of the new ones of the 181 positions have been filled to date. Okay? All right, and there's just, just another layer of that. One of the things that we also do every couple of years is we review vacancies to see which ones have been vacant for a long period of time. And we have those conversations with departments. So that is part of the, you know, checking to make sure that we are utilizing the positions that the Board has awarded. And then, if there is a position that is vacant for a period of time, we try to address why that is, and then whether that position needs to continue as we move forward. Okay?
One more.
Yes, ma'am?
Then, on the insurance cost. Because I know the county has been essentially paying for that increase for the employees' insurance. Are we going to continue to do that, or are we going to be passing part of that increase on to the employees?
So typically, what we do is we get the finalized increased rate from our carrier, and then we have discussions to see typically, in a typical year, we'd split that cost with employees. So whatever that increase would be, they're, like, let's say it went up 6% in total. Our percentage would go up 6%, their percent would go up 6%. But that is a discussion that we always want to have, because in tough times, the county has decided, in some cases, to eat that cost and take on the full increase. And other times, they've decided to share that cost. So that will be part of that conversation. So right now, what we'd have to identify is what is that total increase going to be? And it is a little early in that process, but we usually, we usually put a 6% placeholder in there to start the conversation. And then, by late spring, we'll have that finalized number from our carrier, working with them in HR. And that's when we'll want to have that conversation. Okay? Very good. Any other questions? Good? Okay? Very good. Okay, so one of the things I do want to show you is just kind of give you a breakdown of what we did last year, because this is, this is important to know, kind of where the dollars go. Now, one of the things we have already touched on a little bit is this, last year in 2025, we didn't add very many new positions. So we go through this, there was, I think, 384 position requests, and I think we did just around 10 new positions in total. So most of these that you walk through are going to be existing services. And so when we look at the top of this, you're going to see that the total, or, sorry, the bottom right of this, the total increase from '24 to '25 was $76 million. And you can kind of see how we broke those down. On the left side, we broke down general fund programs that had $1 million or greater increase. We put those in order of that magnitude. Sheriff's Office led the way with $13 million. Now, most of their increases were a result of filling existing positions. So they are down to almost very few vacancies, so they're almost fully staffed. And then, one of the other areas of focus that we looked at, and this is for Sheriff, PD, and Fire, is a large increase in overtime. So that's where a lot of those dollars went. And then, there were some annual maintenance contracts for both, for all of those as well, that had a big driver. And then, we just kind of walked through those. So you can see how those are going to go. One of our pillars is public safety. And obviously, if you look at the vast majority of this, you could include sheriff, police, courts, ambulance contracts, as well as fire. And I just want to make sure I'm not missing anything. Those would be the vast majority of the overall increase. So again, you are putting dollars to your pillars, which is the primary pillar that I know the Board has said has been public safety, number-one priority. That's where the dollars have gone. Any questions? This is, again, historical information, just what we did last year to kind of give you an idea. Very good? Okay, so this is where we want to spend some of our time. So this is always a little bit of a sticker shock at some times, but again, we always work through this. So this is the request that you're going to receive, so it'll be part of your binder. There is, the, the total request, the bottom you'll see is roughly $92.7 million. That is all funds county-wide. And that is the requested increase over 2025. It is very position-heavy, as far as the increase. So there's 290 positions being requested. Now, I do want you to take a minute to think about that. Last year, there was 380. We funded less, around 10. That number has been scaled down a little bit, but it's still 290. So you're still, the vast majority of the requests we're seeing each year is position-heavy. So that is where the departments are putting a lot of their requests, is going to be into personnel. So I just want to share that with you. These numbers do include some estimates. As we said, we just completed the merit. So we have an updated employee roster, and we'll take one more in April after that is finalized, because there is a period of time where, that we just make sure all adjustments are in the system. And then, we have an estimated increase for pension, healthcare, as well as the self-funded insurance. So those are some of the estimates that still have to be finalized, but there are placeholders in there, educated estimates based on historical data. And again, this includes all departmental operating increases, as well as capital. Now, I want to be very clear on capital. So typically, the Board has adopted $12 million a year for capital in the General Fund. If we go back and look at what the capital that we have done to date, all of their capital requests that we received in 2025, minus $14 million is the only amount that has not been covered. So we are making significant strides. We're over $50 million, I believe, in capital in 2025. Between adoption, agenda items, and working through that process, the Board's $1 million capital, you guys have taken big bites out of that apple, and we're down to basically $14 million of remaining. Our plan is obviously to have that, that is in there as a request. The remaining $14 million is there. We know that typically, we have adopted 12. So that's just kind of give you an idea. You have really worked through that biannual process to try to clear that capital line. Okay? So I just want to share that with you. And then, again, the overall increase is 92.7. The General Fund, shouldn't be a big surprise, makes up the lion's share of that, $74.3 million.
Excuse me, Bill?
Yes, ma'am.
You'll be substantiating those requests for positions and capital in that binder that you'll provide to Commissioners?
Yes, so we're actually working through that. Always want to share the full request with the Board. So with, you're going to see, receive a couple sheets on personnel requests, where you're going to see the requests, the department, the position, the cost, the justification. And then also, what we've done is asked the departments to go back and look at their top priorities. So we'll also give you a, their top priority list. So if the 290 is the total, we're going to give you something lesser of that to say, hey, if we had to say what are our, what every department's top two priorities are from them, not from us, but from them, this is what that list is, to help you kind of narrow your search. Because 290 is obviously a lot. We're trying to make sure you have, again, all the original requests and then a prioritized information as well. Okay?
Have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm glad you have peripheral vision. I'm always, um, so does the capital?
Yes.
Does that include any sploßed that was borrowed that after revenue above, we will replenish, or?
So the $14 million is simply what's remaining. It's up to the Board's discretion, because obviously, that's a policy decision, how you want to fund that. So we're just going to simply say, today, $14 million is what's remaining of what was originally asked in 2025. We know typically, we've done 12. It doesn't mean we'll do 12 in '26. That is obviously the Board's decision. But we're just letting you know that you've made significant strides. Now, if there is a sploßed eligible item, one of the items that we're working on, because Jimmy and I are working on these together, we're doing sploßed as a wrap and capital together, so we can have those conversations. So we know, at the end of the day, how much we have available if we say, fund $12 million out of General Fund. How much do we have left? And can we, are they, one, sploßed eligible? And can they go over here? If they're not, we have to make some determinations of what our prioritization is to get to that $14 million. So that, there's always several ways you can fund capital. Sploß being one, if it was a sploßed eligible project, we have our capital reserve, which is part of where you talk about those loans being repaid. That's where they would potentially go. And those are unrestricted for capital use. And then, we have the General Fund $12 million. So we have multiple buckets, and that, again, which bucket we use is going to be a Board decision. But we'll give you all of that information and walk through the different options for you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Okay, we touched on this already. So we just wanted to give you a little bit, another breakdown of this. Again, General Fund is leading the way as far as the largest requested increase. But some of the other funds that we want to share that are also going to pick up some of this, you're going to see Water Fund is going to make up the list. Obviously, Water is self-supported fund. We are currently working through this with Water. They are, today, $12.9 million increase is the request. But we are continuing to finalize that with Water as we work through some of their, some of their requests. And then, one of the other items that you don't typically see on here is the sustainability, waste, and beautification. There, they have a $2.5 million requested increase. Now, theirs are driven by a couple of things. A few position requests, three, to be exact. And then, they have operating requests, which most of that's coming from professional service contracts. But again, we'll walk through that in detail with you. The reason why that is important is because that is supported by the General Fund. At the end of the day, that, the money that we increase over there is traditionally considered as part of the General Fund, because it is subsidized by the General Fund to do so. So we'll walk through those different scenarios with you. And then, lastly, is Fire has a very small increase, but it is over $1 million. So we are showing that. But we'll also, again, walk through those different scenarios. So if you're looking at this globally, this is really comes down to four funds. Most other funds are going to be flat or have a very small projected increase, so under $1 million. But again, we won't overlook those. We'll still walk through those in detail with each of you. And some of those are very positive numbers. So for example, I'll give you another one, Hotel Motel Fund. That is simply driven by revenue that's collected. So if increase doesn't have a negative impact, it just means we're collecting a little bit more than maybe hotel motel tax revenue. Or let's say, you know, something like that, or golf course, maybe the same thing. Those are revenue-driven, and they use or directed to support that fund itself. Okay? Any questions on this? Good? Okay, all right. And then, what we did, I know this might be a little hard to see, but again, we'll make sure we'll walk through these. These are the requests of the General Fund that are over $1 million. And we'll kind of walk through these to start. Sheriff, just like last year, would be the top of this list. They're requesting a pretty significant increase as we go through these. And again, most of theirs are heavily driven by personnel. So they're requesting 113 full-time positions, and that is roughly $11.2 million of this total request. So personnel, yes, new positions. 113 full-time new positions is their initial request. And that is, again, their total request is $27 million and change. Personnel is increasing 16.8. So that, that is the primary driver of that. And then, they do have some operational increases, which are going to be annual maintenance contracts and professional services, professional service fees. And then, lastly, because we said we knocked out most of the capital, there is $4.4 million of sheriff requesting capital that have not been funded. And those are going to be chillers, boilers, HVAC, and roof replacements. So those are tentatively included in this request number for you to consider. Okay, and then, we're going to walk down. The next one is Police. Requested increase is $8.8 million. 5.8 million of that is Personnel. Now, the reason, yes, ma'am?
You're talking about tire budget request?
Yes, ma'am.
But you're going to break it down as what's capital?
Absolutely.
Equipment and so on and so forth, and what's Personnel?
Yes.
Operating?
And we'll touch on that during this presentation, but yes, we'll also do that. So some of these, and Police will be the perfect example of this. For example, Police is asking for an $8.8 million increase. Okay? 5.8 million of that is Personnel. But what, we talked about this already at the beginning. Police did a great job of filling vacancies. So a lot of that Personnel increase is simply because we filled the positions. Okay? So that is one of the big things we look at. But then, the discretionary factor to that is requested new positions. So that is something the Board will have to weigh in. So Police, for example, asked for 17 new positions. So that would be a decision the Board would have to make. But the fact that they filled the positions is something that is already now built into the budget process. Okay? All right. And then, we kind of walked through these. A lot of these, again, are very position-heavy. Now, I will say that there's a couple unique ones that you're going to see on this list, libraries. Okay? Library isn't typically a big ask, but a lot of theirs is capital. So $3 million of libraries is dedicated to capital. So that would be a decision of how we'd want to fund that as we move forward. Okay? All right, any questions on these? And again, we'll go through these in detail with you, but I wanted to show kind of how we're looking at these and how we're moving forward. So the biggest part that you'll want to take away when we have our individual meetings is kind of getting that breakdown, as Commissioner Burrell said, of how much of this is new positions, new contracts, new operating versus something that's already, already built in. And we're going to show you both. We're going to show you what would it look like as of today with the current service levels, no additional positions to see that baseline increase, and then, what we'd look like with enhanced positions or enhanced services or enhanced operations. Very good? Okay? Yep, sorry, Commissioner. Just look down.
And I don't blame you, because this is going to be kind of prickly.
Sure.
So on the Sheriff's request?
Yes.
I would like to see the breakdown of his current positions that are duplicating services within the county.
Okay, we will, we will have to work with his office to get that to you.
Right, because I think that's critical that we start looking at that, is because, again, we've got duplication of services going on here. And this is quite a big budget request.
Yes.
So I would like to know how many people he has in the position that are duplicating services and the amount of funding he has paid for the year to those positions.
Okay, we, we will put that ask out, and we will try to get you that information. And one of the things that's important to know for the Commissioners is a lot of these requests, because this is the second year of the biennial, were requests in '25. So we went from 380 positions to 290, not because we filled them, but they actually removed some of those requests. So his 113 were his original 113 that he asked for in '20, '25. But I understand what you're asking.
Okay, so now you got me to another question.
Yes, ma'am. Okay? That's okay, that's what we're here for. This is, this is why we're here.
So of, of the, I think you just said 113 positions?
Yes.
Okay, of those 113 positions, how many of them are duplicate of existing services within the county? How many of those were new positions? Did he fill those 113 new positions, or did he just transfer them to positions that are now duplicating services?
Let me, let me clarify that. The 113 is his requested new positions. That's where he's asking.
For this budget.
For, for, he, who actually asked for it in '25, got, did not receive any. That request was reviewed and validated by the Sheriff's Office and carried forward for '26. So they had the request of 113 last year. That request still stands for '26. So that's what we're saying, 113. Now, what he, where he has come from is, one of the things that is important to know is looking at that vacancy. So again, he is down to fully staffed, and I'm not advocating or, or trying to persuade anybody either way. But those are the key details that we'll provide you. But I will do our best to reach out to the Sheriff's Office and see if we can get that request to you, because we will not be able to identify what you're asking based on looking at an employee roster. That'll have to come from an operational perspective from his office. But we will definitely put the ask out. But again, the 113 are requested new positions. So that's one of the things we want to watch for. Now, one of the things that we always look at as we talk about this is, you know, if like, for example, if Finance asks for three new accountant-threes, and we had five vacant accountant-threes, that doesn't make a lot of sense. So that will be part of those conversations as we move forward. Fair? Okay. All right, so my next slide may not seem like a good slide, but for us, after last year, this is a very good slide. So these are our current impact items that we stand as of today. $843,000 of items that will impact the budget in '26 that were approved via an agenda. That, if that seems like a lot to you, I want you to remember, that number was $16 million last year. So these, we are doing really good. These are, there's really not a big list, and most of these are small impacts. So as we walk through these, and if you read through these, a lot of these, you're going to see our agreements and contracts.
I'm just smiling, because three weeks ago, it was $300,000 less.
Yes.
And I think we are just so used to responding to those individual agenda items that it's hard to envision the overall impact that it's going to have as we set the budget for the next year.
Absolutely.
We typically will be mindful of that, I believe, when positions are created, because we know those have to be sustained. But when it comes to some of these items, for instance, the service or system items like the chrono system, that's not insignificant. That's about a third.
Sure. Yeah, you're, I mean.
Of all the requests.
To your, your point, Chairwoman, there's, I mean, there's two items that are pushing $300,000. But again, when we look at comparison to previous year, this is down significantly. But we made some big changes in two thousand and twenty-four into two thousand and twenty-five. And the biggest thing there was stepping grade.
I hear you, but we don't have last year's dollars.
Understood, and we're going to get to that, yes. Yes, ma'am.
So what was the ask last year?
So the impact items were north of sixteen million dollars is what the board approved. And the biggest part of that was stepping grade. Because we made a significant change to the stepping grade plan and that was the big driver. But that, just to kind of give you an idea, once that's approved by the board, that automatically is now included in any future budget. So these items here, I know it's eight hundred and forty-three thousand. These automatically now will be picked up in the budget process. Okay? So that's why that sixteen million dollar number last year was so significant is that, that comes off the top.
Bill?
Yes.
Me, over here.
Oh, sorry, I was like, where's that coming from?
I just want to point out too.
Thank you for waifing.
That we are almost at the end of the legislative session.
Yes.
We don't always know at that time either what unfunded mandates. So if you take a look at this slide, you will see three hundred thousand dollars worth of unfunded mandate for a great cause. But it was passed on to the jurisdiction. So be mindful that the three hundred thousand dollars is for PTSD for firefighters that by no fault of anyone else's, we need to fund, but it was out of state legislature.
And that is a critical part of what we do for every buy, or every board cycle is want to make sure we're sending you that. So you get that impact list of this is what we're approving, this is what's on the agenda. So please, if you missed it in your agenda book, you get that Excel sheet every time that's going to say, this is what's approved to date, this was what's on the agenda to keep in mind.
I feel like perhaps that needs to even evolve into a conversation at this point. But getting back to Dr. McMorris's point, the PTSD insurance benefit, that's something that was legislatively driven that we're responding to, which is the second. Well, that's the most significant expense that we have here is three hundred thousand associated with that.
Sure. And you will notice there are some reductions in here. There is at the second line from the top, you'll see a reduction. Yeah, so it does go both ways. The reductions are far less common than the increases.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner. Oh, go ahead. So the guardian care bill, is that a complete reduction, the ninety-six forty, or is that?
I think it is just a partial reduction. But I will make sure I clarify that with Cassie and her team.
Okay, thanks.
And these are also, because they're already presented through the department for the agenda item, they've already vetted those and they help prepare those impact statements. So we're just simply capturing those. But I will follow up with you, Commissioner, on what that looks like.
Okay, Commissioner Gammel.
So on the PTSD insurance benefit, because as Dr. McMorris said, that was a state mandated expense to the county. Is there a way that we can find out how many access that insurance benefit? And the reason why I'm asking that is because I think we need to let the state know, you know, if it's filling the need, it does. Because again, they're mandating us to make a payment that is way above what they're willing to pay on the insurance benefit. And so the question then becomes, you know, do we pay this three hundred thousand insurance benefit every year? Or do we just put away the amount that their premium was going to cover and then use it as needed based each, on each jurisdiction? So I don't know if there's a way to work with Ordel to find out. I don't, again, we don't need to know who or anything like that, but just if any of our officers or first responders utilized.
We can check with HR and make sure that we can provide you with that. But it's so new, yeah, it's probably going to take a few cycles, yeah, to get some real comparable data, some trends. But we can certainly look at it.
Yeah, I just, I think, you know, just all one hundred and fifty-nine counties need to push back on the legislature on this one. Not that it's not doing a benefit, but I think there's another way that the county can handle it that would be more financially beneficial.
Any other questions before I go to the next slide? Okay. So this is kind of our schedule. So what we're going to do from here through May is begin having meetings with each of you. So what we're, what we tentatively have scheduled is at least one meeting in May with each of you as well, oh, sorry, one meeting in April and again, one meeting in May is what our tentative plan is. We may look to increase that as we get closer, as we get closer to finalizing that so we can have conversations about what we'd like to see in there. And we may need to see getting more than one of you in a room together as we have these conversations. But we're going to work through Dr. McMorris to make sure she's part of those conversations and she can help guide us in those conversations as we move forward. But one of the key parts of that is we're going to give each of you a binder that's going to have the full requests as well as some recommended requests. So you're going to see that from the budget team. You're going to see a list of budget recommendations based on spend history, existing contracts and things like that. We would argue that those probably outside of impact items need to be moved to the top of the list. They're not real exciting things. Again, a lot of those are, you're going to see things like utility costs. Okay, those are things we can't just let slide time and time again. I know a lot of times they'll, they'll just overlook those and say, hey, I need, you know, this position or that position. But we need to address those and make sure we stay up to date. So those are going to be a lot of what you're going to see in the budget recommendations as simply things that we're going to do whether we want to budget for them or not. And again, utilities is a perfect example. So we're going to walk through that, but each of you will have a binder. We're going to meet with you initially to go over the binder, let you go through those questions. We'll take as much time as you need. If you would like a follow-up meeting, we're definitely willing to do that and happy to do that. We want to make sure you have the information you need to make decisions. Okay, I'm going to get to the second green box on the screen. So this is a little, going to be a little bit different. So again, a reminder, this is the second year of the biennial budget process. We also got our digest update. So that was not nearly as strong as we've seen in the past. So we are going to be looking at a limited resources as far as we move forward is what that growth is there. So to kind of give you an idea and put that into perspective, two thousand and twenty's fours net digest growth was eight point five two percent. The initial projection for two thousand and twenty-five is two. Okay? The reason why I say that that's important is that is before exemptions. So we went from eight point five two last year, after exemptions to six. If we're starting at two this year and we have exemptions, that number only goes down. So just kind of keep that in mind. Now, we will continue to finalize these. And I will say this, Tax Commissioner or Tax Assessor's Office does a great job of keeping us updated and that number generally has some movement between now and the final. But I don't expect a lot of movement in that. So that will have, that will factor into our discussions as we move forward. And then when we do that, we're going to be walking through this with you to make sure, one, we've captured your priorities to make sure that they're included in the department request. And if they're not, we will circulate that to the board. So let's say for Commissioner Gammel, if you have a priority that is not identified in the budget request, we want to make sure we share that with the whole board so they know, hey, this is a priority for Commissioner and that way it can be part of the consideration and conversation as we move forward. And then, of course, we're going to be working through the county manager's office to help prioritize those from the operational perspective to make sure she can provide that needed input for y'all of where her vision of the operational priorities go to help you make that informed policy decision. Okay, any questions on this schedule?
No questions, just a comment. And I shared this in communication with you, Dr. McMorris, and also my one-on-one with Commissioner Burrell, is I was looking to have community or public meetings with respect to the strategic plan as part of the all-in initiative. And one of our strategic initiative areas is effective and efficient government. And addressing the budget falls within that. So I would like to start meeting with the public with respect to the budget as part of that during this time that we're processing these. I've just found over the years, it's very difficult for us to be as responsive as the needs are presented to us from the departments because we're distilling this from a board. And then we are hearing mostly from the public that they do not want to see their mileage rate increase. They actually would like to see it lower. But we also have corresponding ongoing requests from the public about the services they desire. Don't cut my services and service levels they desire. And I think it's very difficult for us to reconcile that if we're not having these broader discussions about the budget with the public.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm just going to put a bug in the air of our departments that I would be looking for their engagement to not just share their budget requests with us, but that we also look to how we will share that with the public so that they can distill these things. Because we're responsive to the public and most of the public that is the loudest and that comes here does not necessarily weigh the same information that is presented to us when it comes to the reasoning behind those budgetary requests. And this is a group project because the budget comes from their tax dollars. So they should know where the, where the pain points are of our organization. And so I just want to give everyone a heads up that I will probably look to have another series of meetings to start addressing the efficient and effective government portion of the strategic plan to address this budget. This is the middle of a biennial season. So this may have a more significant impact next year when we start the beginning of the next biennial budget. But it could have some bearing here if we see the same diminished resources coming to the county from the digest. If it goes down by two percent as it has when it's offset by, when it's offset by other responsibilities of the tax commissioner. So, you know, we'll see if we even get, we'll see if we get above zero percent. But we're going to have to make some decisions we have not had to make over the past four years.
So I do want to be clear, we do anticipate a positive growth in digesting. But I will say a minimum.
Well, the exemptions, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, so from a tax perspective, our values do go up, but the concern is the exemptions and the bearing of that.
And Stephen White and I had a good conversation. And this is, I think, important for the board to hear. And he did a great job of kind of presenting it to us as well. Is you got to remember the digest grows. So a two percent growth on a bigger number is still a good number versus, you know, a smaller number at eight percent growth. Eight percent sounds good, but each year that digest grows. So it is, it is always going to be harder to hit that high watermark as percentage. So what that's going to translate to you and the board is what is that dollar value going to look like? And that's where that decision point will come in. But yes, absolutely, Chairwoman, happy to assist in any way we can. Okay. Any other questions before I go to the next slide? Okay. All right, this is just lastly key dates. So this is our schedule. It should look very familiar to you as we follow the same process each year. We'll be presenting the proposed budget on June twenty-fourth at the one-thirty work session. And then you can see how we're going to walk through this process as far as mileage rate, advertisement, public hearings and so on and so forth to final adoption on July twenty-second. So that is kind of our schedule of we work through those. But again, we have a lot of work to do between now and then. So those will be meetings with y'all and working through those requests and kind of deciding what do we want this budget to look like? Where are our pain points? Where are revenues at? What is that going to look like? What are we willing to fund and how are we willing to fund it? So with that, that concludes my presentation. I know that was a good, a high-level overview. The detailed work's going to come in the binder in the individual meetings. And we're, and again, once we give you that binder, it is yours to digest, yours to share, yours to walk through, whatever you want to do with that. It is good information to walk through and we will keep you apprised of changes. Because one of the things that's important to know is we're going to give you that binder. That binder will change. Because anytime we have approved another impact item, we'll update that sheet and give you a new one. Anytime we have a change to the roster, we'll update it and give you a new one. So that, this is a snapshot in time in between now, a lot can happen between now and July. So just want to make sure you're aware of that is that those numbers will change and some of them could change significantly.
Are we anticipating any more impact items?
I would say just on history alone, we would anticipate more impact items, absolutely.
Yeah.
Every time we have an agenda, we do write the impact. Not all of them are financial. There are some that aren't. But at least through the end of September, you have that many agendas that may have an impact.
Okay, what specific impact items are we expecting?
I can get with you, Chairwoman, but I need to get with the team to see what the anticipated agendas that may be coming forward.
Okay.
Because Bill wouldn't necessarily know that, what they're, you know, what they're planning to submit. So we can look at that and get that to you, like what are your big contract items that may be coming forward? What are the big expenditures? One other note on the fifteenth, we might, I'm not sure if you wedded to that, but there's a little small thing going on on July fifteenth called the All-Star Game itself. So I'm not sure if.
We may need to look at moving that date.
We may need to look at that date because that is a significant event for us.
We are flexible and we'll make sure we, the big part that we'll have to do is make sure we meet our, thank you. I had not thought that far ahead. So thank you for that. We'll look at that date because we want to make sure we hit our required public hearing dates. So we will be flexible, work with Pam's office and make sure we can find an alternative date. So just ask that you be flexible with us on your calendars on that. But it'll be in and around the fifteenth. We may have to flex a day or so, one way or the other, or maybe two days, one way or the other. But we'll work with you on that. Thank you for that, that is an important reminder. Thanks, Bill.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions for Bill? Thank you for your time this afternoon and walking us through this.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, our meeting is adjourned and please feel free to join us at seven PM for our General Board of Commissioners meeting. Thanks.